Is Armin here?
Yeah, he's on.
Chris, change your screen settings if you go to the top right and you hit speaker view. It'll change it so you can see everyone who's in the room.
Gallery view, okay. Hi, Armin. There he is. Okay, so we'll open a meeting.
He may not have his, Armin may not have his voice on. Do you have your, Armin, do you?
Can you hear us, Armin?
No.
Do you want to tag? It's 6:30, couple of minutes late, but 6:30 we open this meeting. And now, we all have to go into executive session, so we have to close this Zoom. Melissa's gonna stay on this as the administrator in case other people come, correct?
Megan.
Megan, I'm sorry, Megan. And then we'll come back after executive session. We'll close out that Zoom and come back to this Zoom. And when we come back, I'll read the rules, the script that we have for the regular meeting that Megan and Greg supplied us. So I guess.
Before we switch off, though, we probably should take the vote in public so that it's recorded to go.
You're correct. So we're gonna go into an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. Also, to discuss discipline or dismissal, or complaints of charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, negotiations with Police Chief Noble. So, all those in favor, Melissa?
I.
David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
And I say aye?
Did anyone second?
Well, I guess we'll see you in executive session then.
Justine?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna sign off so I can host the.
Okay.
Now, it'll be an hour and a half as we all figure out how to get into the other one.
I'll see you on the other side.
Yeah.
And now what we're gonna do is get out of this and come back again?
Yep.
Correct. How do you leave the meeting? There's a thing, there we go, leave meeting.
You're still here, Armin?
Oh, so I just, I'm supposed to get off now?
Yeah, you're supposed to get out and go to the other one. Greg sent another. So I think Greg emailed like 11:04 this morning, and it had a link to a different meeting to go into.
All right, I hope I could find it. All right, thanks.
Okay. Nope, Armin, you're looking for the other one? Yeah.
I can't, I can't find that email.
Okay, I'll find it and I'll send it over to you.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Yep.
Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will include public comments insofar as the open hearing is concerned on the water and sewer rates. For this meeting, the Board of Selectment is convening by telephone and video conference by Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and they take care not to screen share your computer, because anything you broadcast may be captured in the recording. The meeting materials, board docs and supporting meetings, all of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless, as noted otherwise. For non-board docs, supported meetings, all supporting materials that have been provided members of the body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise, and the documents can be found on the town webpage. So now, the meeting business ground rules. We now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. One, the chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will, down the line of the members of the board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and to state your name before speaking. Members who wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comments, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comment. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule call vote. Those are the rules of the meeting as provided. So, the first order of business is our public comments. Do we have anybody that wishes to make public comments this evening? Hello? Okay, having not heard anybody.
This is Margaret Ann Miles from Summer Street. I was unable to find information about this meeting on either the town website or on Facebook, and so I'm concerned that we haven't actually ensured public access to this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, let me just verify that it's on the website.
Okay.
I mean, I can see other members of the public that I did not afford to attend to, so I assume it was accessible. I see it right here on the front page. It looks like a meeting, but the public news starts at 7:00, but it's on the website.
Okay.
On the website or on the Facebook page?
I can't tell you if it's on the Facebook page, man, but I'm looking at the page of the town website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any public comments?
Hi, this is Jeff Swamber, 96, Acton Street. I see from memo from Greg Johnson that a motion to delay the town elections is scheduled for next week. I just want to highly encourage you all to support that. You know, having an election the day after the governor's stay-at-home advisory ceases is just a bad practice in terms of getting out people to vote and participate in town elections, and so I just wanted to speak in support of that. I also didn't notice anything about extending the deadline for registration to vote. Currently, it is set for April 15th. With an extension of the election, I'd also encourage an extension of that registration to vote, since April 15th is one day after you're planning to vote on the extension of the election. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to make a comment?
This is Dick Downey. One comment is that people would put their own selves on mute when they're not speaking. You won't hear that echo in the background.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move to the acceptance of our minutes from previous meetings. The first set of minutes is from the March 2nd, 2020 minutes. They make a motion that we accept and approve the meetings of our March 2nd, 2020 meeting as shown. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa. Does anybody have any comments or concerns about the minutes of our March 2nd, 2020 minutes? Okay. All those in favor? David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Right. Oh, well, will I. Our second set of minutes is our March 4th, 2020 executive session minutes. Make a motion to accept and approve the executive session meeting minutes of March 4th, 2020, but not to release them. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments about the executive minutes from the 4th? Since they're not released, we really can't. David? You approve?
Oh, yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yep.
And I approve as well. Thank you, guys. And finally, the last set of minutes to approve are the regular minutes from our March 4th, 2020 meeting, and I make a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March 4th, 2020 as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, does anybody have any comments in regards to the meeting minutes of March 4th, 2020? Okay. So votes for approval, David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I as well. Thank you, those are the minutes. Our next item of business is our correspondence items for this meeting. And we have correspondence items A through G. And I move to accept and approve correspondence items A through G as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any discussion about these several items of correspondence? Okay.
I gotta say, I don't remember the last time we saw the Bino report from St. Bridgetts.
I can't remember that either.
Yeah, I know.
I can't remember seeing it for a while. Um. Okay. So for acceptance of the correspondence items for this week, David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I as well. Those are accepted. And then we have our consent agenda items. And those are a cemetery deed and a Green Community Program application. And they make a motion to approve the consent items A and B as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on these? Okay. For acceptance, vote for acceptance, David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I as well, so those are, those are good. The sewer and water hearing, we'll come back to, because we can't start it till 8:00 PM, is that correct, Greg?
Correct.
Time? All right. Let's go on to number eight, which are the community impacts, the public health conditions, and the declaration of a state of emergency. Do you want, Greg Johnson, could you just give us the rundown of exactly what we're looking here?
Yeah. So, I have been informed, and as I'm sure a lot of the board and potentially the larger public has been aware of, other municipalities, cities, towns, that have declared a state of emergency for their municipality. I asked town council for their advice on the matter. I listed that advice on the board doc that you see. Just to summarize, it's not exactly the most legally binding, it's not, it's the weight of a town or city doing it, it's not the same as a state level, that's, there's no real statute for a town to declare a state of emergency, and the governor's already declared a state of emergency for the Commonwealth. However, there's no harm in doing it. If a town were to declare a state of emergency, does it mean that we get any more financial aid or other support? Not necessarily. It's, but again, no harm, no harm in doing it. So if the board would like to declare a state of emergency, I provided a sample that I received, I think from MMA, or maybe MAPC, the different advocacy groups on behalf of the municipalities.
Okay. So, there's a motion to declare, we have the motion is to declare that as of April 7th, 2020, state of emergency exists in the town of Maynard and shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So for discussion, I'll go one at a time through the board and see what everyone's opinion is and have the discussion, David?
Yeah, I have no problem in making the declaration, only because you never know what might happen as we move down, down the road, and if the state were to say that only communities that had declared, you don't want to miss out on that. There was a time in the past where we did declare a state of emergency when there was a belief that the river was gonna flood downtown. It got really, really close at the bridge down near John's Cleaners, and we declared a state of emergency at that point with the anticipation that it would allow us to get quicker state reaction, should, because the fear was the water was gonna flood downtown, should that happen, and luckily, it never did, but, so there is some precedent for us as Maynard declaring a state of emergency. So I, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you, David. Armin?
Yeah, I feel the same way, because we don't know exactly what, what's gonna transpire, so it's better to be positioned for that in case there's anything coming our way.
Okay. Justine?
I agree.
Okay. Melissa?
I concur as well.
Okay. And I, I agree as well, because in addition to the things that David mentioned, that no, you know, there's any number of calls that were invited to daily from Meyer and the rest, all the organizations of the town is party to. Magic, MAPC, and all those other organizations, and they all have, there's a possibility that there may be something that comes of this at the end of the day, but, so yeah, I agree, it would make it unanimous that, you know, I agree, but we will vote. So in voting, in favor is an aye. David?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And aye, so that's five. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, can I add?
We have declared a state of emergency. Go ahead, Greg.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Johnson, town administrator. I'll try to be better about giving my name each time. It, now, the, the sample declaration I gave does mention that it's in, you know, it's at a joint vote with the Board of Health. So, that may not be necessary. I don't know if the Board of Health wants to declare a state of emergency as well, but if the Board of Selectment already has, that's good enough for me. But I will, I will inform the Board of Health that they, that you have done this action, and if they want it, if they want to get in on it as well as they can, and then I'll have you sign it, Mr. Chairman, digitally, just as the representative of the chief, you know, executive body.
Okay. You just tell me what you need me to do.
Very good.
All right. And then, before we go to the next item, which is under the same, same heading, on number eight, Greg, is there anybody else that's going to, need to recognize, to speak on this, the financial impacts of the town budget?
Depends on the questions, I'm, I'm not this, I don't have the level of expertise that Mike Guzzo, the finance director, or Cheryl Kane, I'm not sure if she's on the phone, on the call as well, but Cheryl Kane, the treasure collector, Angela Marima, okay, I probably got that wrong, as the chief assessor. So, I can, I can lead it, Mr. Chairman, if you will, if you would, if you would prefer.
There is no vote, so it's just a discussion, so go ahead.
Very good. So, so I know, I understand it's a lengthy memo, but I wanted to get all my thoughts down. Over the past two weeks, the finance. The finance team. I'm trying to, okay, so the finance team and myself have been discussing the matters, but the catch is, we still need to find out what the impact of, of the COVID-19 and the responses will be to the economy, because the town's finances are dependent on revenue, and that revenue comes from the economy, as well as the, you know, the property taxes is primarily, and then, you know, other sort of local receipts as they come. So, we're still in the process, and by we, I mean the finance team, Mike Guzzo, the finance director, Cheryl Kane, the treasure collector, and others, that are still researching and analyzing what the impact may be. Simultaneously, Mike has reached out to the school department so that they get to give their input as to what their spending level is currently, and what their projected spending will be, so that we can, as, in addition to the town spending, what we can know what the, what the, what the shortfall may be between what our projected revenue is versus what we expect to spend. So in the meantime, I issued a memo to town departments, town departments, to implement a spending freeze. It's not, not that difficult to do. We've, we've, we've re-prioritized and rebalanced our operations. Town Hall's still open, Town Hall's still functioning, but some of the other operations like DPW have different schedules right now. However, public safety is still just as active as they ever are, so there's not a lot of spending differential between now and what there was before, or what there would have been. So, in addition to doing the research as to what revenue we may be lacking for this quarter, or in response to that, we may need to ask for short-term borrowing. To do that, I could send a letter to the Director of Accounts at the Division of Local Services at the State's Department of Revenue, requesting authorization to do the short-term borrowing. It's, it's, it was probably gonna be encouraged by the state. We've also been allowed through recent legislation to do amortization over three years of whatever debt we may incur over, over, you know, due to the lost revenue. And that means that if we have to borrow for money, or if we have to go into debt, because, you know, we have to continue regular spending to do, to keep up just essential operations of the town, then the state is now allowed that we can pay back that debt over three years. But we haven't made those determinations, because it kind of starts at that first research that Mike and his team is doing, is what our revenue may be versus what our operations costs are. Lastly, I know, I'm just summarizing a lot of stuff here. Lastly, is the need to look.
That's your surface. I thought you.
Lastly, is the need to look at capital projects, which was all related to, where that would have been reflected in the town meeting warrant as well. Namely, the, the, the most urgent, I would say, or more timely project, gonna be the Green Meadow Elementary School roof. So that, that roof funding was meant to be done through a special town meeting, so done on the same time as the, same night as the annual town meeting, but the special town meeting allows you to spend money within the same fiscal year as opposed to an annual town meeting. That means you can't, you can't spend money that's incorporated until July 1st, the new fiscal year. So, so we were going to, I mean, the proposal was to have town meeting approve the appropriation for whatever the scope of work was gonna be done for the roof, and then we could start work shortly thereafter. And I, and the point was to do it when the school was unoccupied during the summertime. Understandably, the school is not occupied right now. But again, without the money being appropriated, we don't have the money to spend, and still it's unclear what the scope of work will be. So, with the, with the proposal to, to extend the date of the town meeting, that's gonna give that much tighter of a timeline for whatever construction may occur before the school opens in August. And I have reached out to the consultant, CBI, CBI is the name of the consultant, and I asked him, based on this proposed timeline that I've also provided to you, the board and the public, what, what might be, you know, possible. I don't, I'm not sure I've heard back from him yet, so I'd have to double check. Either way, it's, it's a much shorter timeline, and he hasn't been out to bid anyways, he hasn't gone out to bid, because I haven't given the green light to go out to bid to do, you know, for that construction in the first place, because the cost of the contract with CBI to do that bidding work and the contract administration is $62,000, and that's above the threshold that the town administrator can authorize. But I, I probably wouldn't give that authorization until I knew what the board, the board has still not approved that, that article for the town meeting anyways, so I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have authorized that, even if I could. But there's, there's so much more to it, Mr. Chairman, within the, within the memo, but as of right now, I'm not asking for any votes, I'm just trying to keep the board informed.
Thank you. But, comments on that particular item? I wrote on the list. David?
My only question, Greg, is, is, has there been any impact that you guys have noticed relative to any slowdown in incoming expected revenue? And I'm talking specifically on any bills that were supposed to be paid by residents, whether it be, you know, we just had, what, was it, was it a water bill that was just paid, or?
Water bill. Yeah, water bill.
Water bill just came out.
Just came out, so then it was, then it was the, the tax bill that was due March 1st or April 1st, April 1st. Has there been any indication, basically, of any slowdown in revenue coming in as a result of impacts to residents?
I don't know.
Can you hear me, Dave?
Yes, I can.
All right.
That's, is that Mike Guzzo?
Yeah, Mike, you have to introduce yourself.
Yeah, Mike Guzzo, Finance Director. Yes, we have.
Yeah, I'm Mike Guzzo, Finance Director. Yes, we have, we've seen, for instance, we receive, you probably will not receive much in terms of meals tax. We've seen a slowdown in other areas like fees, permits, because a lot of things have stopped. Right now, if I gave you my best guess, just on local receipts, we're probably, we'd be short, probably close to maybe right now. If everything came in, I did worst-case estimate for the last quarter, couple of hundred thousand dollars.
How often though, Mike, did those, did those meals tax, for example, come in? Was that quarterly that we would have seen them, so in other words? We have not seen, we have not seen the impact yet, is that accurate?
No, right, with through the first three quarters, which is like a month behind, it's basically eighty-five thousand, we budgeted a hundred and ten. So chances are, we won't even come close to that.
But not only that, Mike, isn't this pushed to June 1st now?
Excuse me?
Isn't it pushed to June 1st now as a?
For what?
Oh, for the meal stacks?
Well, on that, it's based upon, well, right now, based upon all these, the. Restaurants and everything being closed, chances of getting revenue is gonna be almost slim. But, you know, as far as tax revenue. The key is what we do in the last quarter at this point. I can, you know, we're looking at worst-case scenario, you know. Water sewer, we're looking at that also, it's not as bad as the general fund. But, you know, we're having, we're gonna have most of it, I'm waiting for the school on their piece of it, we probably should have it maybe completed. The end of this week, the early part of next week, some sort of estimate to go forward. We've had, everybody's been running on shifts here, the finance team. So.
But is it, is it, is it fair to say that, given the fact of the timing of this, that we're sort of in the middle of, we, we really haven't had a hit per se, because we haven't seen it? If you know what I mean, we're, we're.
Right, we'll see the last quarter, that's where the hit will be.
Yeah.
Haven't really seen, if you look at the first three quarters, we're basically on target from this year to last year. Maybe slightly over, but you start looking at the last quarter. That's when we're gonna start seeing the impact of all this, including real estate taxes, motor vehicle. Because if you go back, just using motor vehicles as an example, when you had the downturn, the first thing that happened, that happens is motor vehicle revenue goes down drastically. So that's probably where one of the biggest hits will be, and permits, because, you know, no, no one's really pulling anything. But we're gonna, we're really pushing to get some of this information. You know, Cheryl comes in at four, and they've been running on shifts, so the key is to get it while we can, and we'll, you know, we're gonna put an estimate together, like I said, but we'll. Be giving estimates actually almost weekly, at this point, going forward. I mean, this will also have an impact on next year's budget too, so, you know, especially local receipts, but.
Has there been, have there been any calls either Greg or Mike to Town Hall relative to people that are saying that they're struggling already? That they won't be able to meet?
The only calls we've been getting is, when are we moving, are we moving out the date from May 1st to June 1st?
For tax, for a tax bill?
Tax purposes, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you do that, you end up probably, you will see a significant impact, because there'll be no, you know, people will just delay it.
So Mike, can I, I got a, Mike, I got a question about that. Mike, can you hear me?
This is Armin.
Yes, I can hear you.
You gotta say your name before you talk.
Oh, this is Armin.
Yeah.
So Mike, I got a question about that, because you, you did mention, and I know that Greg is not recommending that, he's not advising us that we, well, put the extension to June 1st. Is it possible for us to do this on case-by-case basis, like if someone calls in and, and is struggling, is that something that we could do case-by-case, or does it have to be?
I think you can, yes. Absolutely, because what would it mean to me, we probably waived the interest for that period of time, you have that ability. But I'll check with Cheryl tomorrow and, you know, and move legal, and we'll make, we'll double check on that, but I don't see reason why you couldn't.
This is Melissa. I, I feel like that's a huge liability of somebody saying, well, you accepted this other person, but you didn't accept me not having, you know, criteria to meet in order to do that, or making it a blanket policy.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Melissa, that's the danger of doing it. I mean, how do you prove, how do you, you know, because then, you know, you could have one person do it, and then another person, and there's really no way to check it at all, none. I mean, if it was you, if you're asking me my recommendation. I would agree with Melissa.
What would we do, this is David, what would we do in the situation if lien holders extend to their, like banks, extend to their customers. The ability to push out a monthly payment and add it on to the end, and they're, they happen to be in escrow. And there might be a lot of people that have their tax bill in escrow that will.
We have to check with Cheryl on that one. I would check with Cheryl, we can do that tomorrow. And find out the impact, she'd have a better handle on what you're telling me, we can get an.
I'm actually, Mike, this is Cheryl Kane, I'm actually here. So you were asking, Dave, if the mortgage companies extended out for the residents?
If they did, if they did, if they did, what, how, you know, what would the impact be for us? Because I, I assume that the large majority of, oops.
Hello?
I think we lost them just a minute.
They've lost.
Sure, this is Melissa, I would think that if mortgage companies extended the deadline to pay your mortgages, that wouldn't apply to our tax bills, since we're, you know, it's a separate contract, basically.
I agree, I think we would still get our payments on time. And we have about fifty percent of our residents have mortgage companies paying their taxes. Hello?
So you're, so apparently you're saying that, this is Armin, so you're saying that mortgage companies will pay taxes prior to, they'll pay the taxes anyway, without collecting it from, from the, what do you call, the owners?
I believe they would do that, I mean, I, I don't know, no one has really come up to me with that kind of, you know, scenario, so I don't know for sure. But I don't think the mortgage companies would assume they could pay our taxes late and not have to pay fees or interest.
And this is Melissa, I mean, just from a contract liability, there are two separate, there's two separate contracts, so a mortgage company doesn't have the authority. To defer taxes on behalf of Manor, they only have the authority to defer their payments on the lien they hold for that individual property.
Perfect, yep.
But again, I mean, it's unprecedented, I mean, stuff like this hasn't happened before, just as Cheryl said.
This is no ground for all of us, so.
Yep. Okay. There is, you're back David?
muted.
Can you hear me?
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Justine, anything on that subject?
Uh, no, I think that obviously, what everybody's saying, it's, there is a lot of uncertainty, and it's frustrating to have to wait. For some of these answers, but I know that that's, that everybody's doing the best they can, and that's kind of part of the process, and I will just keep working towards it. And, you know, I realize that probably this year and next year are not gonna look at all like what we thought they were gonna look like a month and a half ago, so. But yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, the finance team has been operating in shifts, so we're, we're doing our best at this point. If I lose my voice, I get, I get, lose my voice when I get stressed, so I apologize.
Yeah, don't get stressed. Anything, Melissa, about, about it?
Nothing else, no.
Okay, mom said, thanks Greg for the, you know, your, your memo and all the information as well. Helps.
Very good.
On the C, on this item, the reporting of procedures, reporting procedures. Greg, you want to just go through that?
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. So the State's Department of Public Health, and I don't recall when, every day kind of flows into the next one pretty quick around nowadays, but. Not that long ago, maybe a week or two ago, the, the State's Department of Public Health changed their guidance to municipalities. For what level of statistics or reporting of positive COVID-19 cases to release to the public. So originally, it was at the town level, and we would be informed. Sometimes through rumors, which would have to be verified through our public health agent, who would then, in collaboration with our public health nurse, who happens to be on staff with Emerson Hospital. They would verify and report back and forth with the Department of Public Health at the state level as to what the town residents cases may be. And not necessarily even residents, but if any, any visitor or employee within the town, we were informed of that. But as I was saying, about a week or two ago, the, the Department of Public Health changed their guidance in to, to release the case numbers by county. And, and I believe daily, they have been updating the State's Department of Public Health website, which I link to on Board Docs. To show, show where they are with the quarantine levels and, and the, the monitoring of those cases. But the Department of Public Health has said that municipalities may choose to still release at the town level. But I, I, that's not for me to make that call, so until, until the board tells me otherwise, the Board of Selectmen, I'm going with the default, which is what this, that the state's saying is, stick to the county level. We did, through the, the public health agent, reach out to the Board of Health, to, the town's Board of Health, to ask them. What their preference would be, town versus county level reporting, and they couldn't come to a consensus amongst, amongst their members. So, no input, but as opposed, you know, it's, so if the Board of Selectmen gives me direction to release case numbers by the town, I will. But no, no, no personal identifying information will be given, in accordance with privacy laws and whatnot.
Greg, this is, this is David. I'm, I'm always of the opinion that any, any information that can be shared, the better, the more information we have, the better it is. So the people aren't wondering what is going on, and then rumors do take over, rather than having facts. I keep in touch, as you know, with Bill Rica, and Bill Rica is on a daily basis, and has been on a daily basis, releasing their, their information. And, you know, for what it's worth, following it is from a, from an interesting standpoint, watching how the curve goes up, and then seeing if there's any way that it's, that's coming down. Seeing if it's consistent with what's going on with the state, has been interesting from my perspective, but more so, as if I were a resident in, in Bill Rica. I think knowing that there are X number of people in Bill Rica that are, that are affected, knowing how many people have dropped off and are considered recovered. I think it's somewhat helpful to the residents to put some reality in it as well, as opposed to, you know, maybe that would even help people. Understand the need for the social distancing and everything else when they see that it's hitting nearby.
Good question, or not, not a question, sorry, Greg, or whoever, Justine St. John. I'm, the one thing that I'm concerned about in general is the fact that the Board of Health didn't weigh in on this. I, I don't know how to make that clear to them that, in the middle of a pandemic, that the Board of Health should be actually weighing in on something like this. I mean, I don't mind deciding this for them, but at the same time, I really think it's, it's their, this is what they should be doing at this point.
Yeah, I don't, this is Melissa, I, I don't care at all that the Board of Health hasn't weighed in, I think as the governing board of Manor, it's up to us. And I feel really strongly, just as David does, that transparency is best, if we have information, there is no reason for us to withhold it. People can choose to listen to it or seek it out, but if we know what the count is in Manor, and people want to know that information, we should be posting it every day.
I agree a hundred percent.
So do I, this is what I agree also.
Wait, so that was both Chris and Armin who agree, I'm sorry, just want to clarify.
Absolutely, yep.
Very good.
Is, so Greg, is there, are you aware, or Megan, are you or Megan, either of you aware of any particular reason why the Board of Health? Has decided to not weigh in on this?
So I read the emails that our health agent copied me as the reply from the Board of Health members. One of the members was, could see the pros and cons, as the chair had no opinion, as I was told. I'm not sure what the third member was, what their opinion was, but it, it wasn't a consensus, there's the three members of the board, so they needed to, to vote in, you know, they needed a quorum to approve. So we can, I can, I can relay what I am getting a sense from this body, back to them that you would like the Board of Health. You, you're encouraging, you're urging them to give an opinion, I can certainly relay that, they may be listening.
I, I, I think they, I think, I think as the, as the town's representative in the Board of Health, in a health crisis, a pandemic.
Yep.
They, they have a duty to respond, and a duty to make their opinion known, and, and provide the town with some information. Other than, you know, the drab, you know, pick and paste. I mean, this is what they're there for, and if they don't feel as though they're responsible to. Respond to the town during a, a health crisis of this stature and this nature, then perhaps that we should find another Board of Health. Replace them in people that would, you know, think it's important enough to come out and share with the community. What, what's going on insofar as the community is concerned in this? I don't think, I don't think they get a choice in this.
Yep.
Fortunately.
This is County, may I offer an opinion?
Sure.
I, I strongly urge you to publish it for the reasons that you talked about, but also, we got a town meeting. And at some point, we're gonna have to talk about delaying the town meeting, and without knowing what the real status of the health situation is in the town. That makes any decision we would make about postponing or how long to postpone very problematic. Middlesex County is very, very large geographically, and so county information doesn't give us a good feel of what the risk is. And so I think it's related to the next subject as to when to postpone the town meeting, so I think as a practical matter, that information should be put out there, just so that we can understand the risk. And it also may play right directly into whether we're able to get a quorum at town meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is, can I just ask, is there anyone listening or participating in this number that is on the Board of Health that doesn't mind speaking? Nope, okay.
Alright, so it's now seven fifty-nine, it's gonna be eight o'clock, we have to move into the hearing, public hearing. So Greg, will you? Forward our sentiments to the Board of Health?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so it is now eight o'clock, and we are gonna return to the public hearing, I'll read the original. I will read the original legal notice, and it was the Board of Health, the Manor Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing. On Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, at eight o'clock, in room 201 of the Town, Manor Town Building. At 195 Main Street, Manor, for the purpose of discussing the town water use bylaw, specifically water and sewer rates. The public is invited to attend. And that hearing was continued, it was a continued hearing, it's now continued to tonight, and now the public hearing is now open. And I believe that Justin has joined us, and as well as Doug Gardner.
Correct.
Justin Marco here, that's correct, Chair.
Okay, gentlemen, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alright. I guess. There is a. There, there are a couple of different motions, but we kind of have to decide which way we're gonna go before we get to the motion. So Greg, I guess, Justin, would you like to kind of give us your opinion as to where we are, and what we should be looking at? And the suggestion from your end as to where we should, what we should be looking at this evening?
Kind of a general overview of the original hearing was based off of work done by the finance, Towns Finance. Work done by the finance, Towns Finance Team Director of Public Works in conjunction with Doug Gardner and municipal consultants. We, I'm sorry, Pioneer Consultants, sorry about that, Doug. Together, we formed the recommendation based off of a number of factors, water capacity issues. Regulations from BEP, EPA and shortfalls from. The previous enterprise fund situations as well as the reserve funds. Not being at a level that would allow us to kind of weather the storm. And it is ironic that this situation is currently happening, as you guys spoke previously. A little bit about the impact that's gonna happen moving forward. Water and sewer rate bills. Have a potential impact on our operation of what is considered an essential function within a community. Such as Maynard, where ninety eight percent of the residents are on water or sewer hookups. What's gonna happen is if we have. Residents not paying their water and sewer bills on time, we're gonna have to dip into the reserve fund to. To maintain operational levels, which our reserve funds are somewhat depleted to begin with. So this is kind of a. Kind of worst case scenario is actually happening right in front of us and part of our recommendation was to help to avoid situations like this. And continue to provide an essential function moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add that the that the. The proposals for the budgets of those enterprise funds, both the water and sewer, in the town meeting warrant articles that are proposed. They, those articles reflect these rates. So it it's all tied together.
If they reflect, this is David, they reflect a proposed increase in rates.
Correct. David, that's correct. This is Justin. Yep.
Yep. This is David again. One, my first comment would be, you know, I don't know if this is true throughout the community. But it's certainly true in the Gavin household. That in the last month, we have used more water in this house because of using dishes. That before were not getting used as often, having to do clothes washing because you want to clear, clean your clothes. I believe that's probably going on throughout the community. And if you remember back, I don't know, Doug, if it was your presentation when you were before us before, or if it just was Justin that said this. One of the reasons that we ran into a difficulty is that shortly after we increased the rates two years ago. And the at the time, the intent was to increase the rates for three years and it would be three year hiatus and then we would have. A a discussion after three years and we're only two years in because the first year. We had the break in the. In the well, which then created a situation where we use so much less water than was anticipated in the. In the model and as a result, our revenue went down from what was expected. So before I go further, Justin, is that somewhat accurate?
That is, David, this is Justin again. Yes, that is correct. And kind of to speak on what you're talking about right now, David. What our current water capacity situation is looking like during this process is we're hitting peaks of summertime use right now. And I am, I have been weighing over the past week to two. On what to present the Board of Selectmen with the potential water ban in regards to our capacity problems. Some of the issues we have going on though is if we, even if I asked to implement a water ban, there is no outdoor water use. So we're seeing the fruits of some of our problems as we speak. I will. I will let you know that Rockland Ave and Well Four are running twenty four hours a day without rest. And Old Marlboro is being pushed at what we can with what we have. Every six to eight hours in between those twenty four hour cycles. And Old Marlboro Road is one of our worst production wells in regards to water quality. So this is, if you're getting calls and and situations, this is why. On my TA, on the TA report, you'll see that I highlighted water conservation and will continue to do that on Facebook, on websites, but. Right now is is a double edged sword.
And and thank you, Justin, for that, David, again. You sort of took what where I was going and put a different spin on it than where I was, where I was headed. In that my comment was going to be, I think that as a result of what we've been through. The additional usage of of water. And and sewage as a result is going to increase the revenue that we were expecting to get on the old. On the, on the old rates, the current rates. And given where we are. As as a country and as a community and as a Commonwealth. That they are currently predicting. You know, potential of thirty percent unemployment. Increasing rates at this point is seems to me to be somewhat. A a difficult proposition to propose.
David, this is Justin. You're not necessarily wrong with the potential of selling water and sewer. Unfortunately, we won't see those impacts until next quarter, which is next.
I get that.
And realistically, whatever we gain on the potential revenue, we're gonna be fixing the loss on this quarter's. Potential reserve cut in. So it's a double edged sword, like I said. So it's one of those situations where if we dip into our reserves now because of the loss of. The potential fourth quarter bills, we gain it the next time around, but there is no interest being made in that time table, so.
This is Melissa.
So.
I just feel like if there was ever a time to dip into reserves, this would be the time. I I just don't see, like David said, with everything people are going through, the unemployment rates, people struggling to put food on the table, keep their lights on. How we could justify a rate increase.
Melissa, this is Justin. Again, yes, you're not wrong. This is what reserves are meant to do. Unfortunately, our reserves are well below recommended recommendations now. Never mind if we don't potentially increase the revenue source to bring those resources back up to where they should be and the recommendation they should be. The reserves in the water alone is less than a quarter million dollars. You'll be surprised how fast that goes.
So Justin, this is Armand.
Yeah, Armin.
Yeah, so to a degree, I'm kind of on a, you know, on a fence in regards to what David was mentioning and and what you're mentioning. Because you're you're making a proposal that I think obviously it is important for the future of when it comes to the enterprise. But at the same time, to David's point, we are gonna be collecting a lot more money than anticipated. Yeah, it's gonna happen in the fourth quarter, but you're still gonna be able to to a degree. You know, replenish the reserve, let's say so. So I know one of the proposals that Greg has made in in his presentation. Is that the possibility of us delaying the timing of the of the rate change. Now, you know, that's something we should be thinking about. Maybe not, you know, don't don't look for alternatives, but maybe looking to delay the, you know, the proposed rate change.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Armin. Realistically, these rates don't reflect the current situation. These rates are for what we're looking for in the future, which is water capacity, as I explained in. In some of the memos. So a lot of these rates are paying for the new well production that needs to continually happen. Unfortunately, running, running water, groundwater wells and treatment plants on a twenty four hour basis is not advisable. If we lose another well because of this, we are stretching it limited right now. If we lose a well. I potentially lose, we as a community potentially lose the ability to supply everybody that is stuck in their house with water. That becomes a giant issue and it is something that is not solved with two months from now agreeing to borrow money in a different. Scenario. These are things that have to go in motion now based off of the EP's long term. Time tables with regards for permitting.
Melissa, again. Instead of putting the burden on residents right now when they're already burdened enough, is this something we can vote to borrow money from to address? And amortize that over three years?
So the 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 rates include the borrowing and debt of one point five million dollars. And the reason that we included it in the Water and Enterprise Fund is because this is a user based service. So I would prefer not to have the general fund subsidize something where, say, Melissa uses five thousand cubic feet of water. And Chris only uses two thousand, where you're all paying equally. This is a user based service, very similar to pay as you throw trash. So including the debt services is in this recommendation rate.
I I mean. We, every time we have this conversation, every year we have this conversation about your water sewer rates and and it's. The the rates are, the rates are in place, you know, it's not a for profit business, obviously and clearly. But I mean, this is kind of, I agree with David and Melissa in that, in this, which is rare.
Timing.
When it comes to this, but it's a timing issue. It's a, I mean, it's a sensitivity issue. You have to consider that. You know, the, we're talking about. We're talking about. You know, the the usage is gonna be extremely high, but the cost is gonna be extremely high. If you have a family of four in the town of Maynard. And they have two young kids and their two young kids are at either the after school program at. At one of the schools or they're at the Boys and Girls Club. They're not paying for the water they're drinking, the the showers they're taking, all the additional water being used. They're not paying for that. And the chances are that the parents are not home. How many toilet flushers are they missing in a day? You know, how many, how many hand washings? How many of those things are, you know, not being accounted for on a situation when that family of four. Is at work, there's two parents at work and there's two kids out of the house. So now you're bringing everyone back to the house for that. I don't know, twelve to sixteen hours a day that a typical group is not in the house altogether and and just. The cost alone is gonna be, you know, staggering to some people because some people aren't gonna believe how how high the. Cost of their water bill is gonna be because of it. And I just think to to then say on top of it that we're gonna. That that number is gonna go up is, I just don't think that with all the other things that's there at this time.
Hey, Chris, this is Armand and to Justin also, but Chris, he just made an excellent point. I didn't even think about that. Because right now, the schools, you know, there's no water being used in that school like we normally do, right? So that isn't that being taken in consideration account that the water usage in the schools not happening?
Yeah, but that doesn't, but that doesn't, that doesn't affect. That doesn't affect a family of four, that doesn't affect a family.
No, I know.
It affects, I don't know.
But it balances out, yeah, right.
Do schools get a water bill?
Chris.
No, they don't.
Chris, this is Justin DeMarco again. No, so realistically, you make a good point, but at the same time, just like Armin's talking about. The utility pays for the school and the town's water bills. So the operating budget is not changing, whether the water is being used by the school or by a family. Realistically, what's happening is the the school and the town eat that budget through this utility that's already accounted for. So yes, a family of four will see an increase if their use increases and they will potentially enhance the reserve funds. But the water capacity also is more. Typically. An office use or a school setting is ten to thirty gallons per person per day. A typical single family use, which is the added laundry, showers, maybe people are taking double baths, double showers. Becomes a hundred and ten gallons a day per person. There is a huge jump in a correlation between the two. But again, I stress the fact that we're at maximum use right now. And that is, you can look at it in both ways. We're also using a lot more energy to produce the water. We're using a lot more chemical to produce the water. We have people working longer hours to keep these things moving forward. There is a cost associated with producing water at this rate too.
Well, this is David again. I think, Justin, on your point relative to the. The dangerous situation we are in with capacity. And I know it's not on, well, I don't even know if it needs to be on the agenda if it's an emergency item, but perhaps we should consider. An emergency water ban for outside water usage at this point if we're in that, if we're in that situation. But I thought, going back to Armin's point. I thought Armin was agreeing with Chris and with myself and Melissa relative to his point. That the the water usage, the the people at the school, I I don't know what was Armin, were you talking about revenue? Or were you talking about just capacity?
Capacity.
So the the point is that the water usage that was not being used at the school, you believe offset. The water usage that is now going on at the home, so therefore your thought is that maybe we were at a level?
Yes, yeah, that was my point, yeah.
Okay, and Justin, I think you're saying that the water usage at the school is much lower than what a family of four would be using at home.
Typically, yes, Dave, that is correct. I mean, realistically, my wife is home with my two kids and. They're using water more than they ever have. I'm sure they're taking baths more, they're doing more laundry, they're cooking more. You have breakfast, lunch, dinner as opposed to maybe breakfast and dinner. But realistically, the peak demands we're seeing are very similar to summer use where schools are offline though.
Justin, Justine St. John here. I just had a question. I realize that I. And I think we all know where you're coming from and we know that you are. You're trying very hard to to help sustain Maynard's water for now and into the future. And I I think I echo everyone else's concerns here tonight, which is the fact that. It was going to be painful to raise these rates to begin with. Now where we're at, it it really, it really feels tough to be able to put this kind of a rate increase into play. So I realize that you're talking about the capacity and things like that, but the one thing about this is that. Even if we increase the capacity, even if we put this rate increase into. Into play now, it, we're still not gonna be even, we're. We wouldn't address the that issue with the with the water supply right now. Because like today or tomorrow or the next month, that's still stuff that will happen in the future, correct?
That is correct, Justine. This is Justin again. Yes, but you have to also understand the longer we. Put this rate off or the potential increase in revenue for those debt services, we're pushing that can further away. So if we lose another well today, we're talking about potentially replacing that water source within the next year. If we continue to push this out, that year becomes two years, a year and a half, two years, et cetera. Realistically, this needed to be done last year, but we're in the situation we are now.
Right, so my question, I guess, to that end is, is there, I realize that it's all important. But is there a way to prioritize and I I I realize that it's not what you want to do and it's not what Doug wants to do and it's not what you guys recommend. But is there a way to prioritize it and make the rate increase a little, but not to that extent? So we can move forward.
So a lot of the recommendations before you are priority items. There is some wiggle room. If the board is asking for myself to reconsider our recommendation. And to bring it back to the board, that's fine if that's what you guys want to do.
I would think that that would be a reasonable suggestion. We do have a meeting. We could always, if that was the will of the board. To perhaps come back with a different set of rates that were more user friendly per se, we could. Always continue the hearing to next week if we had to. But I just think, I just think it's, you know, like the the one word that comes up in every conversation is risk, risk, risk. And I guess are we willing to, you know, not do this at the risk of having something happen, but you know, in order to help. As many people as we can save, save the money on this going forward. Well, it's gonna be a problem past, anybody that doesn't suggest or doesn't believe that it's gonna continue to be a problem past. You know. The end of the school year into one, beginning of our next fiscal year is kidding themselves. Based on everything that's been said around the world and across the country, but I I just don't think that. You know, the rates that we're looking at are are fair at this time to anybody that's gonna have to pay them, considering what's going on right now.
Chris, this is David. I attended the, it was back before the world fell apart on us. The Finance Committee meeting that was held where Justin. Presented this proposal at the FinCon. The finance committee meeting that was held where Justin, um, presented this proposal, um, at the FinCon. And I'll be honest, leading into that discussion, I was on the fence about how high we wanted to go with rates and where we wanted to be. And by the end of that meeting, I had become convinced that this was a necessity that we would have to go forward with. And I began to start thinking to myself, where would we be able to find savings for the residents in another location and what, uh, you know, where to move to? Then, as I said, the world fell apart and now I'm, my big concern, uh, quite frankly, is, and I understand Justin's issue relative to, um, the danger that we face. My big concern is, um, the residents' ability to be able to afford all of this because it already was and, uh, was a concern. But now to compound it with this, the uncertainty of people being out of jobs and out of income, uh, to me is, is, is now overtakes the issue of, um, of, of raising the rates in the first place. So my concern rests with the residents' ability to pay because what happens when they stop paying their bill because they can't pay their bill? And then we don't get the revenue anyway. Um, and then you've got people that are in arrears and you've got, you've got a bigger mess. So I do want to hear, this is a public hearing and before we move on, I hope we have, give the people who are online that want to have an opportunity to speak, an opportunity to speak before we continue the hearing.
We're going to open this up as soon as, I was just waiting for all of the, um, members of the board to weigh in and we'll ask Megan to, um, open the hearing up to anybody that wants to, um, comment. And if anybody, there is anybody who wants to comment, please, um, your name and your street is all we need. We don't need the number, just the name and the street and then your comments, please.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, enter a comment, Dick Downey. And, uh, I was on the water study committee, uh, several years ago. And, uh, this right in the sense that we're right on the hairy edge, uh, and unfortunately, well, there's a lot of diminishing returns is the more you pump them, uh, the more sediment that you pull in and, uh, they are to recover. And so as a result of that, uh, you know, you cannot continue on, on this, on this basis that we're at. Also with the fact that Rockland well went out of service, uh, and had to have a new pump, uh, that just exacerbated the situation. And you have very little headroom in your reserves right now. And I think you're going to wind up with a catastrophe. So if you can't go with the new rates, I think Justine's suggestion of doing something as an increase, just so that you can build some headroom would be a, a good way to do that because the costs are going to escalate fairly quickly, I believe.
Thank you, Dick.
Hi, uh, this is Doug Gardner. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Doug.
I can.
Okay, um, I can go back and calculate some scenarios, um, that we need to definitely pay for the new debt that's coming online for the well in fiscal 21. That's about $105,000 in fiscal 21. So we definitely need to account for that. Uh, but I can come up with some couple of different scenarios that will get us through fiscal 21. And instead of having the rate carry us for fiscal 21, 22 and even into 23, um, I'll come up with a series of rates that will do a short-term, um, rate that will have to increase, but not, not by as much as what was proposed back in January. Uh, and then we'll look at another increase for fiscal 22, a year from now. And then possibly a third increase for fiscal 23. So a series of one rates increases every year as opposed to a rate increase every two to three years.
Doug, Doug, just for the benefit of those that are online that don't know who you are, can you, uh, just inform us all as to your role and, uh, I know Justin did at the outset, but now that you're speaking in that capacity, I want, wanted to know to the folks who are listening in.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, um, Doug Gardner, Pioneer Consulting. I've been the town's rate, water and sewer rate consultant for the last, uh, uh, going on three years now. Uh, we came up with a series of rates a couple of years ago. About two and a half years ago now, that would, uh, carry us through fiscal 20, where we are now, and look at a new series of rates for fiscal 21. Uh, the town contracted with me again. Um, I've been in touch with the town throughout the whole process from when, uh, right from the first billing that was so, you know, that was right on target where we needed it to be to when the well went down and then the forced, um, uh, water bans and how that's impacted the, the revenue and it's impacted the enterprise fund. So I've stayed in touch with the town over the last three years and worked with you, um, every step of the way. Earlier in, I believe it was in late November, early December, the town contracted me again to look at the rates. And present what went wrong, what went right and what we can do moving forward. So back in January, I made a presentation before the board for a series of rates that would take you from where we are today into a much more uh, healthy enterprise fund situation where you had reserves that you could use to fund capital improvements as we move forward. There were, there were going to be revenues that would allow for routine maintenance every year as opposed to fix it when it breaks, which we've kind of been relying on for the last number of years. So, um, you know, to, that's where I, that's how I aid the town and that's how I work with the town. Um, I work with, I don't know, dozens of communities in Massachusetts. So, you know, I've got 25 years in the business, uh, water and sewer rates, enterprise accounting, that's basically all I do.
Thank you for the summary.
So, uh, Chris, I'd like to weigh in. This is Ken Estbrook.
Okay, Ken.
Uh, so, uh, Ken Estbrook, Chair Finance Committee. So I'm speaking, uh, as a rate payer. I'm also speaking as one member of the finance committee. I'm glad that David brought up the, uh, meeting that we had, uh, with Justin where we talked about this. It's pretty clear uh, that, uh, any reduction in the water rate is essentially allowing current rate payers to pay a lower rate, uh, at the expense of future rate payers that will have to pay a higher rate. Uh, if we had large, uh, reserve stabilization funds, uh, for water and sewer, then it would perhaps be a different picture. Um, but it's not. If we did not have significant infrastructure issues in the water and sewer system, it would perhaps be different. But it's not. You combine the fact that our state, our stabilization funds and our infrastructure challenges are what they are. Justin and Doug, uh, and others have laid out a picture that more or less tells you that if you reduce the rates or you keep the rates lower, then some future rate payer is going to end up having to pay uh, uh, for that, uh, that difference. And I just, I don't think that's fair. I'm a rate payer. I don't want to be paying anymore. Uh, I, I, you know, so it's not like I'm looking forward to my, uh, water rate and sewer rate going up. But neither do I want to sit here and pay less, uh, now and make somebody else pay for, uh, my rate. So I guess that's my way in.
This is Melissa. So I understand what Justin and Doug are saying and Ken's point of view. And in a normal circumstance, I think it would be perfectly acceptable to raise our rates, but I don't see how in good conscience we can raise the rates at all with a 30% unemployment rate and people struggling to pay everything right now. I just think it's unconscionable. I, I think we need to revisit this when we're out of the woods from the whole COVID situation and people are in a better place. I, I mean, this is the one time I think the town really needs to step up. I know we don't have a lot of reserves and we're probably going to have to borrow money, but I also don't think kicking our residents when they're already down, it's the time to do it.
Okay.
This is Phil Cranshaw.
Yep.
Phil Cranshaw, Muckinbird Lane. Um, I think I agree with the general sentiment that, uh, things have changed and assumptions have changed. I think if you go back and crunch the numbers, look at them again, maybe the focus would be on just whatever's needed to cover the increase in debt service. But it feels to me that your operating expense increases will be well-covered by the increased household use because we have to remember that not only are they using more water in each house, but that water is being billed at the highest price increment. So just because you use two, 10% more water, your bill's going to go up 15% because you're getting kicked to the highest increment. So I think your operating costs are going to be covered, but there is a point of focusing on the increase in debt service. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So Chris, can I say something to Armon?
Yes, sir.
So, um, it sounds like we have two options in front of us. Is one is to come back with the, a different rate, um, schedule for now. And, and then the other one is to what initially Greg proposed is to delay the timing of this proposed rate, the original rate uh, for, you know, sometime down the road. So, I mean, to Justine made an, I think Justine's, you know, point is something that we should visit and, and have Doug come back to us with, uh, a, a, a different rate, uh, at the same, and for this point in time and, uh, you know, talk about that and have a discussion regarding that and make a decision on that.
Well, to you, yeah, to your point, we can do both.
Yeah.
We can revisit it at a later time with, um, new information or updated numbers or suggestions from Doug or, you know, and see where that is. And then, you know, that coupled with, um, Justin's input on the, the next suggestion or next set of suggestions from Doug.
I think we're going to have to do a combination of both things. I think we're going to need to look for some sort of small increase, um, just to cover the debt. And then we can look at, um, what kind of increases we're going to be, uh, will be required, uh, as we move forward. So, I mean, we need to at least get our head above water because right now we're, we're in, we're in danger of, um, you know, sinking. So, you know, we need to, to right the ship and at least get us to as close as we can to a break even situation. And make sure we have enough money to pay the bills, pay the new debt service and anything else that comes along, but, but not, you know, taking into consideration, uh, the economic conditions and, uh, potential, you know, difficulty in people paying their water bills, um, be cognizant of that with any increases that we're going to recommend for fiscal 2021. But I can come back with those scenarios for you next week.
Okay. So is there anybody else that has a public comment to make? Would like to make a public comment, shared public comment? Okay, so.
One question.
Yes.
Downey, uh, what, how do we compare with other rates around this, uh, the median area?
Dick, this is Justin DiMarco. Dick, can you hear me?
Yep.
So if you go back to the summary of findings that I put on, um, the DPW's website and the town's website, you'll see a small comparison, but they're not apples to apples. Um, if we were just a surface water producer and we could do a comparison with another surface water producer, that's one way. Um, it's very easy to get lost in the comparables and say, take 4,500 residents that are served by water in another community that's 4,500 residents. The difference is the capacity issue. So the closest, um, the closest communities to us, um, on the summary of findings, um, are Littleton, Concord and, um, uh, can't remember the other one. But part of the issue that they have is they can sell water at an alarming rate. They produce two times the amount of capacity that we, we can produce at all three wells on 24-hour max production. They can do this without maxing out. They do this with 75% capacity where they can produce 2 million gallons a day. We're lucky to produce a million gallons a day. This is why our rates tend to be higher and they're going to continue. If we continue to lose capacity, we have to pay for the, um, increase in, um, in, um, operations through the loss of revenue. So part of the situation that the reason that I'm trying to address this sooner rather than later is because if we were to lose another well or another well source, we're going to have to adjust the rates to get to the baseline of our current operating procedures. If you look back at what Doug was talking about when we lost Rockland's well, part of this rate recommendation isn't for an increase in operating expenses besides a couple of different line items. It is to reestablish a baseline based off of usage because we don't have the ability to sell for as long a period of time.
Okay.
Water usage was down 8% from the last study until, um, to this study and wastewater usage was down over 10%. So no matter how much more people are using, uh, because they're home, we're not going to make up that difference. So that, that is a big part of what this, of what the rate increases is, is all about.
And we can only produce as much water as we are capable of doing. And it is highly advisable to not continue to run Rockland and well four at 24-hour increments.
I guess my question, sorry, Justin, is Justine again. So, and I know that you keep saying that, but even if we go forward with this rate increase rate this second, we still have to continue to run Rockland and well.
That's correct, Justin. Right.
I, I really want to make it clear though, that I, that I do completely understand and agree with the fact that we do need to address the water and sewer situation and that the water and sewer situation is one of the most important things in town at the moment. And I understand that it's frustrating for, for everyone that's put a lot of time into this because, you know, we are investing in our future. I can, and I do a hundred percent agree with that. All I'm saying is right now, unfortunately, I, it's almost like a disaster scenario. It's, we don't, we don't want to ask the residents right now to get us to the place where we're going to be able to build more and, and I don't want to go backwards and I understand that and we have to incrementally move forward, which is why I'm saying, can we, can we find some kind of a happy medium that would make this, this board comfortable? Um, and it would still, it would still get something done and then, you know, we can come out of this and then look at the full picture and move, continue to move forward.
Justine, just one more thought, um, based off of some of your comments. So part of the situation is yes, if we were to lose a well today, what's our options? We have an emergency manual in regards to mutual cooperation with two communities. And realistically, what would happen right now, if we lost a well and we couldn't reach, um, our residents' needs, we would have to ask Acton or Sudbury to utilize our interconnections, which would cost the, the, um, utility. I'd have to pay for the usage that I steal if they allowed me to from Acton or Sudbury through our reserve funds, because that's not accounted for. I don't have a line item for that. So realistically, if we continue to drain our reserve funds to just run our operation and if this situation were to occur, we would be borrowing money, very similar to the talk of the general fund, where we'd be borrowing for operations, never mind for future capacity increase. So just keep that in mind.
Yep. So this is Melissa. Given that people are home and we're entering spring, wouldn't it be prudent for us to enter a water ban now to prevent outdoor water use? And at least get ahead of the game on that in terms of capacity?
So Melissa, this is Justin again. I've been playing this day to day to day because just to kind of reiterate with what David is talking about, I'm trying to sell, sell, sell while we have the ability. The second we get three or four days worth of nice weather and I see people washing their cars and my tank's not refilling, um, I'm going to go to you with an emergency recommendation and we're going to have to implement. We, we're going to have to be prepared for that. At the same time, I need to make that revenue while we can.
As I had mentioned earlier in the meeting, uh, or in the discussion that, that, um, to what Melissa's point is, perhaps that's something that we should implement now uh, with the understanding that, um, people unfortunately are not going to be able to water their lawn, even though here we are in water lawn time. And they're not going to be able to wash their car on the nice day that we're going to get next week. We can't afford that. The other point I wanted to make is, as I think I expressed this at the, uh, at the joint, um, meeting when we, uh, met with the schools and the finance committee. You know, the importance of our water infrastructure, I don't think is lost. And I think this is true for all my colleagues as well. It's not lost on any of us. Especially when it comes to trying to develop economically, we're going to need to have the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure in order to allow new businesses. in order to allow new businesses to come into town. Now we're also gonna be having that compounded by the fact that many of our small businesses, I'm afraid, as a result of what we've experienced over the last month, are going to be going away due to the fact that they couldn't continue their operations. And so the, that even makes the future development of our community that much higher because God forbid if we have to start transferring regular property tax revenue that used to be covered by some small businesses and others that are out of business over to the residents, that compounds the problem even more so. So our water and sewer infrastructure is not lost, I don't think. It's certainly not lost on me and I think I speak for the entire board when I say it does, it's not lost on any of us. And this is a very, very, you know, it's a challenging issue for us. But as Melissa has stated a number of times, it's just very, very difficult to, to ask at this time when we don't know what someone's job situation is gonna be, a large majority of the town's job situation might be, to, to plan to hit them with an increase in fees. They just, we'd be setting ourselves up to people not paying their bills.
Mr. Chair, if you're, if we're still in the public hearing, I'd like to add something to my previous comments.
We are.
So I, I'm not at all unsympathetic to the idea that this is not a good time. The problem is, is that this good time, that this bad time to raise water rates is not going to go away. We're not going to see the end of this in April or May or June or July or August. We're not likely to see this, the end of this troubled time for months to come. If we were to delay this six months, we will have people who are saying, I'm gonna have trouble with this six months from now. The problem is, is Justin has said to you, is we have capacity issues now. One of the things he just finished saying is he doesn't want to put in a water ban now because he has water capacity to dis-sell and needs the income from that. If you were to put a ban in now that would reduce revenues earlier than what he would like to have happen. That's the problem. We're at the edge here. And so again, I'm not unsympathetic at all. I'm a rate payer. I understand the challenges, but I think we as leaders of the town need to look at the state that our water and sewer infrastructure is in, do an assessment of that, a realistic assessment of that and do the right thing to invest in it in order for us to be able to maintain the capacity. I am worried and I would not, while I don't wanna speak on behalf of the entire finance committee, I'm certainly not alone in this regard of having concerns about us not having the revenues and the investment, the revenues in order to invest in the infrastructure.
I do just wanna add, this is Justin DeMarco again. I do just wanna add one more thing. I, myself and Doug can get to work very quickly tomorrow and come up with a couple of different scenarios such as what you guys have asked. I do recommend that we don't kick this down several months from now for the vote. I am sensitive to what you're saying. I do fully understand it. Sometimes I know it doesn't seem like that. It's only because of, I see the other side of this. But I am, we are setting our operating budget based off of the rates. So I would prefer to come back to the board with a different scenario that might work with what some of the concerns are now and still have a vote prior to July 1st so that we can set our operating budget off of that. I am a little concerned with pushing this past our potential operating budget.
Okay. So, anybody else have any comments? I was just, you know, I, I agree that we shouldn't kick it too far down the road and that, you know, if we delay this until next week and have another discussion, it makes some, some sense and see what you guys could come up with. At least that's my opinion. I don't, you know, I'll just do a little roll call of the other four members of the board and see if that's a sentiment that's shared in a majority. And if that's what it is, we'll, we'll ask Doug and Justin to do that. If not, we'll restart over and see what the next suggestion is. So I'll go down the list. David, are you okay with that thought?
Yeah, I, I'm always open to see what other options are available to us. So yeah, I think that that's a wise thing to do. Even if we had voted tonight to say no, I think it would have been a wise option to say, come back to us with something else. I mean, that's, so I have no problem with that.
Okay, Armand?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, sir. Justine?
Yes.
Okay, Melissa?
I'm also in agreement.
Okay, and I am in agreement with that. So I will make a motion that we continue this hearing until our next meeting, which is April 14th. And we'll do that at 7:30 PM. Greg?
Got it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I'll go down the list to see all in favor. David?
Aye.
Armand?
Aye.
Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And I as well. So we're gonna continue this hearing. This hearing is now closed for this evening. We're gonna continue it until our next meeting, which is April 14th, I believe. Yep. And then we'll, we'll reconvene this hearing and reopen this hearing at 7:30 on the 14th. And hopefully we'll have a suggestion with and from Doug and Justin.
I'll have it to you by the end of the week so you can look it over at the weekend.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
For around your time tonight, Doug and Justin.
Thanks. We'll see you next week. Thank you.
Take care, be safe.
You too, thank you.
All right, so now we're on to the number nine, which is the town meeting. And there's a motion to set a new date for annual and special town meeting. And then it's to set a new date of June 13th, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Justine. All right, Greg?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, we had been anticipating for a while, and so my notes are a little outdated, that we had been anticipating a special legislation to allow for the extension of town meeting dates in light of the recent public health crisis. So the board can set a new, I'm summarizing a lot of, a lot of direction we've gotten from the state into legislation and a town moderator, Dick Downey's here, can clarify if, if need be. So the selectmen can extend the date of town meeting till June 30th, 2020. And, and then beyond that potentially, but I don't, I'm not recommending that at this time. And then the town moderator can also extend it if that's, if that date had already been set. June 13th was, was the number, I'm sorry, was the date that was proposed to allow for a couple of factors. One, it gives a couple of weeks offset between the changeover of fiscal year. So it would give the finance team on the town side and the school side as well a couple of weeks to be able to, to do the numbers and do the turnover for the new fiscal year before that starts on July 1st. June 13th happens to be a Saturday because it was, there was also just a proposal to consider an outdoor venue for a town meeting. And just as a, as a note, town council just wanted to throw in that, that, you know, always has a weather risk as well as some accessibility concerns, so we would have to mitigate those. So I, I decided it'd probably be better to do a Saturday date for if you're getting an outdoor meeting. That way you could have it at 1 PM, you know, early in the afternoon and, you know, nicer weather, you can stay out longer. And so that's, that's the date I'm proposing. And that, Mr. Chairman, is also listed in the memo I attached to this topic on the agenda, which outlines one scenario, it's up to the board, one scenario of both town meeting dates, which is both annual and special town meeting, as well as election dates because they all, they all tie together.
Greg, this is David. Did I read or did I just make up the fact that, that the state may have given guidance against outdoor meetings in a field because of, because of accessibility?
It wasn't the state, it was Lisa Mead, town council, that had advised. She didn't feel like it would be as accessible to have it in a field, likely, you know, whether it be wheelchair access or otherwise. You know, the, the one, so town moderator, Dick Downey, had, had shown that, and I do not recall what town it was, they held a, they had a special town meeting on the parking lot of the, of one of the school facilities. And that way you could use the parking lot lines as the, the offset between bodies to abide by social distancing. So that might be a possibility, but all that would have to be, you know, logistically handled.
Greg, this is Melissa. I just have a quick question. If we do continue it to June 13th and the state of emergency or stay at home is extended, I assume there's no issue coming back to a vote and extending it further so long as it's allowed at the state level?
Yeah, yeah, right, absolutely. I mean, yes.
Okay.
Justine? Jump in for a second. When the warrant is actually printed and distributed, the selectmen can change the date to anything that they wish. Once the warrant is issued, then it's the moderator who then can extend it beyond. You only can do it 30 days at a time, although you can do it multiple times. So obviously we'd have to be synchronized with the town clerk and with yourselves to make sure everybody was. But if it was an unhealthful situation on June 13th, we have the ability to go beyond that necessary. And if necessary, you could even go beyond the beginning of the fiscal year and be at one 12th budget per month.
You're, you're popping in in a little bit, in and out, Dick. Can you repeat that? I just didn't hear everything that you said. I don't know if everybody else got it or not.
Okay, sorry.
That's much better.
Okay, I'm sitting a little closer. So if you go out to June 13th, because the warrant hasn't been published yet, the selectmen can pick any date they want. And so I, I agree with Greg that June 13th makes some sense because we might want to try to do it outdoors. We have a precedent for that. If you remember back when we had it in the football stadium years ago. But the, I, once the warrant is published, then moderator has the ability to, to push it out in case of an emergency. So if, if this COVID-19 is still a significant issue on June 13th, I can recess that meeting out 30 days at a time until it is, you know, safe to have it. If it goes beyond July 1st, then the town, the ability, as long as we go with Bureau of Local Services, I believe the Director of Finance, we have the ability to spend at a rate of one 12th per month of the previous year's annual budget.
My only, my only comment on this, Chris, is that I don't know if it's related to this or if it's for the next part of it, but my suggestion personally would be that whatever we end up putting on the warrant, you know, moving forward with this town meeting in June, I would like to move forward with actually just the bare bones of what we need to move forward. And then, you know, any bylaw changes, things like that, even though they, they might seem like they'd be easy and they'd go through or whatnot, I would rather that those get pushed, especially if we already know we're gonna plan for a special time meeting in the fall, that pretty much everything else gets pushed to the fall meeting. So we're only there to do the finance business, the operation of the town and whatever priorities we have with that, and then everything else falls away.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Justine on that, absolutely.
Yeah, I. Know what Ken's thoughts on that are.
Yeah, so I would, I would agree with what Justine was putting forward. I'd express to Dick as well as to Greg and others that there, you know, there's currently 40-something articles on the annual town meeting warrant. And so that's, that, that's obviously a lot and the number of those can, can, can be put off. Some of those, obviously, you know, the green metal roof one, I think is one that the finance committee is concerned about. I'm sure the school committee is concerned about that as well because we're, you know, we're already in a position where work could be done because the kids aren't in school. But we, you know, we don't have a plan in place for that. But, so I would agree, June 13th makes a, makes a lot of sense. I guess one thing I would say is I think we should plan for both inside and outside. So you could imagine it in the Fowler parking lot or the Fowler field or in the auditorium there, so.
Do we, do we have a outdoor venue large enough to support the number of people we may be talking about? In this, in the, in the distancing requirements that we may be required to meet?
It depends on, on, on the amount of turnout. So is large and it has the lines already painted just to, just to guide, you know, for the, for the placement of bodies and whatnot. But town council, Lisa Mead, felt that the Fowler Middle School might be just appropriate. I mean, turnout's really gonna be tough to tell for this, this summer. It's, people just may not feel comfortable with.
You won't be going on vacation, there'll be plenty of people around.
Right.
Then the mosquitoes will be out and you'll have AAA.
All right, well, now.
But you know what? But you know what, this is Armand. It depends on what we're gonna have on, on the, you know, for the town meeting. I mean, if it's gonna be a skinny version, then you're not gonna have a big turnout, so.
Well, well, no, but I, I think, I think, I think the opposite is true. I think if we're gonna have a skinny meeting and it's gonna be the important issues, there's gonna be a lot of people that don't wanna sit through somebody's recitation on a bylaw change and some of the other business that we do at a typical town meeting, a typical special town meeting. I think you'll end up, if you're just talking about some of these financial issues that we're, we're dealing with and coping with, are gonna have to deal with and cope with that are gonna appear on this warrant, I think you'll get more people. And it's, you know, it's nice to think that the high school, you can watch a football game at the high school, you can do a lot of things at the parking lot at the, at the Fowler school, but I think you're gonna end up with more people than not if you skinny it down because a lot of people are not gonna be, you know, they're gonna be, oh, great, we don't have all the superfluous stuff that we usually get and, you know, it's not gonna be superfluous, but you know what it is? It's not, it's not the money, it's not the dollars and cents. It's not what's gonna be important to people. And to David's point, if we're looking at a, a, a potential of 30% unemployment, it's gonna be even more important to people to be there for the financials. So I think we're looking at, you'll be looking at a lot more people and you're gonna need a lot more space than any of the parking lots that I've ever been in and you're gonna afford if we're still required at the date and time and place that this is gonna occur to practice social distancing of some, some nature that's, you know, now they're talking in neighborhood of six feet, we're gonna need a bigger, we're gonna need a bigger boat.
Dick Downey, I, I agree. And I think that the football field is probably the venue that really makes the most sense because this is not gonna be going away in June. There's still gonna be a lot of concerns until there's a vaccine, this is gonna be all problematic. And so I think you're gonna have to have your social distancing even at that date, irrespective of what else happens. And one other thing is that in the past, we have done the annual and specials all as one meeting on the annual. So we just vote for the fiscal year 2000 at the annual 2001 town meeting. So we would just have everything, so we won't have to go in and out of meetings like before. To Chris's point that we wanna streamline this so that people are gonna be antsy, especially if they're gonna be standing. And they're not gonna wanna sit through three hours of town meeting, wanna get this over with quickly if there's all the social distancing going on. So I think that we should have a streamlined warrant. I think we can do it all as one meeting. Lisa has allowed that in the past. And I think we should talk about a venue that can handle a fairly large crowd, to Chris's point. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. Is there any way to do a town meeting virtually? And the only reason I. And the only reason I ask is that a large portion of the population that comes out is over 60 and they're a high risk demographic. And even, and just as we think going away, even if we are free to leave our houses. So if we want to minimize public health risks, do we even have another option?
No, I, I can speak to that. So this has been a topic of conversation at the moderators association meetings. And we have actually put forth a proposal that has potential of allowing that in the future. But we ran into a lot of roadblocks and especially goes to the voting. And so they would need enabling legislation by the, by the state house. And that has not happened and it probably is at least five years away.
Thanks, Dick. So I guess, I, I mean, we have a motion to set the meeting for June 13th. And then, and Greg.
Yeah.
So. Well, there's no more for that. But. So I guess we'll, unless anybody has any other comments about the suggestion of the meeting on June 13th. We can vote on that and then move on to the conversation about the streamlining of the warrants. So.
Nobody, nobody has raised, and maybe they didn't, I missed it, the fact that the June 13th is a Saturday. Is that, that was intentional because of the fact if it rained or something, you could delay it out longer in the day or something? Was that the issue? Or what was, what was the, what was the rationale behind a Saturday?
Greg, Greg mentioned it. Greg, could you re-mention that?
So I threw out.
Well, just because of daylight.
Correct. That's, yeah, at, at one point I, I used to play out in the woods a lot for a living and I found that things, things easier done business-wise with daylight.
Okay. All right. So I'll go down the roll call for the vote. An aye vote is in favor of June 13th. David?
Aye, but just a point of order. Do we have to identify a location and a time?
No, because we'll, we'll do that when the board votes to publish.
Propose the warrant. Okay. Aye.
All right, Armand.
Aye.
Thank you. Justine?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, so thank you. We have set the time or the date of June 13th, 2020. With a date and time and location, a time and location to be determined.
Yep.
So I guess the next is the review and draft controls. So I guess when we come to that, a week, could we, we have a meeting next week. Could we take that? And, and this is just my suggestion unless I want to go through it and just kind of. You know, with the people involved, I see that, you know, obviously Natasha and Lydia are here and, and I, you know, a couple of people from the school community have been on and off in different places. Go through these and, and kind of pick out what we think doesn't need to be included insofar as streamlining. And then, and then go through these next Tuesday. Does that make sense? The suggestion was made that we would streamline, you know, streamline the, the warrants. And so rather than go through these tonight, can we, can you come back with a list of what the streamlined warrant looks like? Or is this the list of the streamlined warrant?
No, Mr. Chairman, to clarify. So one of the documents is titled, and I'll tell you in a second, if you all want to look at the same thing. The one of the documents is titled, oh, draft control list of articles. And it, what it does is it's, it's Becky Moskis, who's the administrative assistant for the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrators Office. She, she keeps like the list of, of the titles and, and the, the, like the progress of approvals of the, of the proposed articles for the, for the town meeting. So on that list, it, it's, it's helpful to, you can just look at it all at once. And you will see that a, a number of articles have already been approved by the board. And then some are still pending. So the, what you see in front of you are those, those controls which are for the public. The draft articles not yet approved by the board, the controls of, of, of articles yet to be approved. So, so Mr. Chairman, if I understand, and I, I agree that this is, and Finance Committee also agreed to this point, which is to have. Town staff and the sponsors for those articles propose a priority listing, a stream, a streamline, so to speak, of what the articles could be. I do want to point out that a number of articles, it, it may not be as streamlined as, as you may think. Because the majority of them are budget-related and that, that does keep the town functioning to, to have those appropriations made. Another, another consideration may be, and I, and I believe this was brought up at the Finance Committee and Ken Esbro can clarify. That some of them may not require that much conversation in the first place. Town report acceptance, typically there's not a lot of deliberation on the floor. However, some of them may. So if it comes to the, I, I don't know, there's a, there's the alarm by law that may be proposed. And maybe that would require some more deliberation. But we can, I can come up, I can have a, a proposed new list of articles for the board to consider. But the majority of the articles for this evening proposed were related to the enterprise budgets for the water and sewer. So with that, with that continuation being, I mean, we would have, I, I would suspect that the board was going to continue the consideration of those articles in the first place.
Then we'll go through them tonight then.
We can, we can, if, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we can. But I won't, I won't have all the answers as to what can be delayed or what the sponsors would prefer to have delayed.
So. So are you suggesting we do it now? We wait and do it next week and, and with the pared down list or?
I'm suggesting we, we, we wait, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we'll table item number nine, nine B till next week and have that discussion on those next weekend. What's, does, I mean, David, are you okay with that?
Yeah. The, the, Greg sort of touched upon the point that, that if, if there's any concern for me. Some of these things are not controversial and I know you want to pare things down. So, you know, there are some of these bylaw changes that the guy, the bylaw committee worked on. And, you know, if, if there's anything that can just be moved along, I would prefer doing that. Even at a pared down meeting versus putting it off and having people wait. There are other, there, you know. So I don't know how much paring down there might be. I do, I do want to get just the, the, the stuff that's quickly moved. As well as the financials is what I believe we should do. But that's a different topic and I'll go with whatever the majority feels. But I think the, the more we get through, the less we'll have to do in a, in a secondary meeting and the more the town will have moved forward.
I agree. Thank you. Armand?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, let's, yeah, absolutely. Let's, yeah, but let him, let Greg come back with the skinny version.
Mrs. St. John?
I agree.
Melissa?
Agreed.
I agree. Okay. So we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll go through that and listen. I agree with David through the town report. We usually, you know, the disposition of old equipment and all that stuff is just a.
Yeah.
It's not a problem. So we might, I'm not talking about taking it out, but.
So. I, I just.
I would suggest.
No, go ahead.
I'm moderate, Dick Downey, Tom, I would suggest that if you can put some of those things that you think are not controversial all together. We'll do them on a consistent calendar to get them.
That's a good idea.
Good idea, good idea. That's why he's the moderator.
That's why he's the moderator.
That's right.
All right, that works too. So before we get to the town administrative report and the rest, it's not on our agenda, but. Jeff Swanberg did make a point at the beginning about the change of election dates and the sign up for that. The only thing is, it's not, is not in our packet. It's not on our agenda. And typically we have not voted on things that have not been on our agenda the first time through. So what I'm going to suggest with what we do with the, the comments that he made, that Jeff made earlier in the, in the comment section, the public comments. Could we put that on for next week, Greg, and have the, you know, provide us in the packet with the, what the, you know, what the regulation, the changes in regulation. Or what's allowed under, you know, under, under the governor's, you know, edicts and proclamations and whatnot and related to this year in particular. So we have the information in front of us and then we can, we can deal with it at the beginning of next week's meeting.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And to point out, I anticipated this and, and a lot of what Mr. Swanberg was ref, was speaking of. I reference in the memo that goes down to the elections and town meets and whatnot, but not the registration. I, I do need to research that. But Town Council has been giving a lot, I mean, she looked this over as well and Town Clerk, Michelle Jenkins as well. Yeah, well, we can do that. Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So that's, we'll, we'll do that next, beginning next week. Town administrators' report this week, like.
It was short and sweet, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I had, I had asked town staff to kind of give the, the board and, and the public a status report, so to speak, of where they are. Yes, for normal operations, but normal operations are pretty much all related to COVID in some fashion, more than others. So I encourage the public to look through it. It's, it's pretty comprehensive. There's.
It's great.
Yep.
Yes.
It was a great report.
It's difficult, it's difficult to even highlight one department over another. Everyone's working so hard.
No, I, I agree. I don't know. Does anybody, any of members have any comments on the stellar TA report for this, this meeting?
I just, I just have a question, Greg.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Armand.
Yeah, in regards to the, what do you call the, the Chinese school?
Yeah.
You, you guys, are you guys just having continuous conversations, it says?
Yes. So thank you for bringing that up. So I'm so glad you brought that up. So the, the, for the public, what Selectman Derek Percarian is referring to is, is the Fozeng Group, I'm probably not saying that right. Which is out of Beijing, China, purchased 111 Powder Mill Road, which is the old Stratus Building Industrial Site on Powder Mill Road. They purchased it for the intentions of converting it into a international school. It will be a phased project initially to renovate the existing structure. And, and then, and which they've already started to, to do some demo work on the interior. They also want to, and then within that first phase is to renovate the entrance way, which they're proposing. And they're working with the Office of Municipal Services in Town Hall, which is building commissioner permitting and whatnot to, to go through that procedure. And we're having ongoing conversations with that. The current pandemic has significantly hindered progress on some of that development. Although it was already difficult just through language barriers and distance, their team is, 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 is out of Beijing. And so they, they get a certain amount of travel time and whatnot. So it's, it's been slow, slower progress than I bet both parties would prefer, but it is progress. And I do want to highlight that as a side, maybe even today, I'm not sure if it, if it went down today or not, the Fozeng Group. Who's CEO is Mr. Wang, offered to give personal protective equipment to the town, to the public safety entities of the town. Which were very much appreciative of, and that may have been delivered today. But that is ongoing. So negotiations, so to speak, are mostly in regards to what the development project is. And then what we can help them do and, and how to kind of move that along. And, and, but we've. Megan Zamudo, this is Town Minister, can speak more to that. But just to, just to kind of summarize it, she has internal meetings regularly. So that we can in preparation and, and continue to help the Fozeng Group regularly. I do ask if there is a member of the board that would like to participate in those, in those discussions from time to time, not necessarily every time. Is, so as of right now, is there any member of the board that would be, that would be willing or maybe multiple members, no more than two? That could serve as a liaison, so to speak. It's not that formal of a role at this time. There's no working group. It's, it's, it's just more of a point of contact if, if the board would like.
It might be interesting to, it might be interesting to rotate us, have us all kind of through. And everybody kind of be involved a little bit to see what it's about and get a feel for it.
Yes.
From my, from my point of view, rather than just have one person, two people stuck there. You know, to have, whenever the meetings are coming up, maybe Megan could send an email and invite, you know, a couple of us to come or, you know, who can go to this meeting. And just to, so that the, the five of us sharing the experience and the understanding of what we're. Being asked to do, what we're asking them to do to establish the Beijing Royal School in Maynard.
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman. We can definitely, as I, as I, we try our best to keep the board and the public informed at all times. Do we have anyone wants to go first? I'm leaning towards, this is Selectman Derek Percarian, but I don't want to speak for.
Yes. Yeah, I don't mind. I don't mind volunteering.
All right, very good. It, it, I think it's a good progress, a good project. It's, it's a shame that it's going to be slowed for the moment. But Mr. Chairman, as always, I welcome the public to, to read the town administrative report. It's, it's excellent. It's thorough. I know it's a lot, but it, but I think it's a good venue for people to kind of be abreast of what, what's happening within Town Hall.
Okay.
Hey Greg, quickly, can you comment a little bit about what's going on with the van program? If anything, COA van and how that's been affected by the COVID, just for, are they able to continue? Or did we actually have to stop the usage of the senior van?
I don't believe we completely ceased. Let me just review the notes really quick from the Council on Aging Director.
I read that it's still, it's still running fairly regularly.
Cause I, I thought that, that I had heard that they were having problems getting people to drive. If that was my recollection, but that was a conversation I had had with you at one point, Greg.
That's right. That's right. So.
Your, your report says that it continues to operate.
Yeah, that's right. So, so, so two points are true. We have three regular drivers, which is. One of which is, is considered a vulnerable population because of his age. One is, has some sensitivities to the family because just health-related sensitivities. And so that means we're kind of reliant on our third driver. But as to what Armin just pointed out in the, in report, it does clarify that they do continue to operate. But obviously with, with the altered schedules and whatnot, it's not as regular. So Amy Lovelace, the director, and Pat Kozak, who's, who's the admin assistant there. Have pretty regular check-ins with, with the majority of their participants and attendees for the Council on Aging. And, and I've also been receiving requests for transportation and whatnot. So the drivers are being safe. My understanding is they wear their PPE as well. And a driver, excuse me, they're wearing their PPEs as well. And cleaning, cleaning the van as, as, you know, as appropriate or whatnot. But they're trying to consolidate the driving as, as best they can. So it's not.
Looks like they're even doing the shopping for some people if, if the senior feels uncomfortable getting in the van because of various concerns.
That's right. So I, I would say, just like all the other departments, people are going above and beyond. So. To whatever they're comfortable. I have not, I have not encouraged, but certainly not discouraged employees to, to do what they, what they feel they're comfortable with doing or appropriate. So I'm certainly not asking anyone to put themselves at risk, but, but you'll see that a lot of the staff are definitely going. They're, they're doing, they're doing very good, very proud of them.
All right. Since we left the challenge report, since we last met, we didn't have an opportunity to congratulate the girls' basketball team of winning the state championship. So congratulations to the girls' high school basketball team. Also, I guess I just wanted to thank Greg and Megan and the, you know, the entire Town Hall staff, Justin and his staff. The, the people that, you know, working every day and just the people in town, that the, the boards, the committees, everybody that's, you know, pulling together to help things. Continue to move at a little bit of a slower pace than usual, but there's a lot of people who are, you know, out daily continuing to work. And, and put themselves in, in somewhat of harm's way on the behalf of the town and the community. And I just wanted to, from where I'm sitting personally, to say thank you to, um, everybody that's, you know, putting forth that type of effort. And that type of risk of their own health and safety for the betterment of the community and the people that live in our town. And I think it's something that, you know, doesn't get said enough. Thank you. And then, you know, also to our, our first responders and the, any and all of our residents who are healthcare providers. And, and as well as the healthcare providers that serve our community for the various hospitals and other, other types of facilities that are in. hospitals and um other, other types of facilities that are in our town, just, just a thanks to the um people on the front lines of all those areas that are um, you know, contributing to the um safety and, and um health of Maynard. That's it for me. David?
Yep, thank you. Um first off, along those same lines, um first, the first point is the, the girls' basketball team and um, and the fact that they are co-champions, co-state champions, although I refer to them as the state champions. I assured some parents that I would um encourage that we do the same as we did for the boys' basketball team when they won the state championship a few years back and seek to get some signs up on, at the entrance to town that say home of the uh, you know, twenty nine, twenty twenty uh state champions, uh whether it says co-state champions or else, nobody will remember twenty years from now. So uh if, if we can recognize them in the same fashion that we did the boys', that would be great. And uh I know it will mean a lot to the seniors that are on that team, um who uh, I think they've just, you know, they're losing out on so much. Not only that group, but the entire senior class, which gets to my next point. I've mentioned to a lot of people um relative to not only the high school seniors and um, but everything else. And we have, this is the, you know, the, the sequoqucentennial, and so I know we have a big celebration coming up. But I am very hopeful that we as a community and we as a board might get together to somehow plan a huge celebration for um the reopening of Maynard. In some fashion that we can, you know, there have been a number of ideas tossed out. I saw that um, that um there was an idea to basically shut down the streets for, for a day to allow the restaurants to put tables outside so that everybody can come down and have a celebration as a, as a community downtown. There were, but even more so, just maybe speak to the sequoqucentennial people, see what they have planned, see if we can combine things. But just a huge celebration of community and welcome back uh once we're through this, this whole thing. Then the next item, it gets more into business, um Nucan. I assume that they failed to meet their, their eligibility by April first, so therefore they what do we do to make sure that their agreement is no longer? And that they have to come back and speak to us should, should they decide to go further.
You're correct. Megan, go ahead.
Um, so their agreement expired April, April first.
This is Megan Zamudo, the Assistant Town Administrator.
Oh, sorry. Um, the, the agreement expired on April first and um, you know, they were scheduled to go on the March seventeenth meeting, which didn't take place. And um, you know, the way the board could move forward is to create a new agreement essentially at this point. Um if, if they, if they were interested. Um so I, I spoke with um the representatives from Nucan the other day to, you know, let them know that they weren't going to be on this agenda, and I haven't heard um if they're interested in coming on a future agenda in the next couple of weeks. But, you know, I didn't think it was a priority for this first virtual meeting.
Good call. The um, so thank you for that. The next thing is something for us all to consider. I, I know we're all concerned about the small businesses and their impact and, and how this whole thing is going to impact them, especially here in Maynard. And then uh the whole trickle-down effect that occurs as a result, should we lose some of them? And how then the tax role that we did rely on some small businesses as it was on the commercial side gets rolled over under the, onto the residential side, uh we have to think about how this, how this is totally going to impact our residential tax rate and residential tax bill going forward. Some things to think about as we you know, as we make decisions, as we move forward, we cannot forget that. And so the more we can do to make sure that our small businesses, let alone our big businesses, remain in in force and in action, the better it's going to be for all of us as taxpayers uh and as a community. Because otherwise that, their hit comes to us as residents, residential taxpayers. And then lastly, similar, in a similar vein, um I think this might have been mentioned at our last meeting as well, but I encourage all residents of Maynard to fill out your census forms and uh to, it's available online. It's important not only for us for, to get an accurate, an accurate count, so that we get whatever benefits come to us for having accurate counts on our census. And I think that's very important. So that's it for me. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and we'll see you next week.
I guess, I'm gonna steal, I'm gonna steal it back and go back to my own thing. Um, one of the things we, David mentioned a couple of times with the Sesquicentennial, and there's also um the Hometown Heroes Banner Program that we are in the middle of, in the midst of, and I know that we're already missing um a number of the um Sesquicentennial events. There's already some of those things that we've started to miss. And I, I don't know if it works or if it doesn't work, if it's a bad suggestion, a good suggestion, but I'm almost think why wouldn't we just delay that and start it the beginning of next year? And just give them the full year, the full, you know, what's the difference? And, and you know, the celebration will still be the celebration, it's just going to be, do it at a time when we're not in this situation and, and the um community can enjoy it for both of the programs, to be honest, it just doesn't.
They may have already booked some, some bands and stuff like that for, for the parade, which uh.
But I don't know, I don't know when the parade is.
That's true. September, I think.
You know, I, I don't, I, I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, cause there's so much, so many moving parts.
Yeah.
That, you know, and we're having, I mean, the, the banner program is much, much smaller and the difficulty we're having getting that set up is, I can't imagine how much more it's magnified with the Sesquicentennial.
I, I don't disagree.
I'm just wanting to, something that we reach out to them and um maybe invite them to our next meeting and talk about what, if, if they've had conversations about it. Something along those lines, just because it's, it's a shame to um have all the hard work and fundraising and everything that all those, those folks have done. And, and you know, they got Kate involved at the state level to, to come up with some money for them and everything. It would just be a shame to have that go by the wayside when we could, you know, when we could, as a community kind of decide to push it into next year or move it out a little bit and, and, and save the events, because they've done a lot of hard work.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree.
That's all, maybe.
Yeah.
Greg, could we invite um someone from there for next week?
Yes.
Sesquicentennial?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah. Chris, I attended one of their last meetings and, and to David's point, there is no bans yet, there have been booked. But uh obviously the, the time capsule event didn't happen, so that was something that they were planning on doing.
Yeah, I just think it's going to be a lot of missed events, that's all.
I totally agree with you, but I think it'll be fun to combine everything.
Yeah. Alright, Armin, you're up, buddy.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh going back to what David said about Nucan, I looked at the report that uh Greg provided us and it looks like uh CCC approved uh Wellspring, so.
Correct.
That's good to see, I guess.
Wellspring isn't one that's in the old Carrier and Chives building?
No.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Wellspring is the one that's enacted and that has the medical marijuana operation. That one, that one downtown on Nathan.
They're on Nathan Street. Oh, I, I always thought it was the other place that was approved.
No, no, Wellspring is the one on Nathan.
Wait, so can I clarify? So um, Mr. Chairman, so this is Town Administrator Greg Johnson. So um the town has had three, now have two host community agreements. One with Green Star, which uh, uh I'm probably getting the address wrong, but it's on Main Street, it's the old it was originally the bowling alley on Main Street.
That's right.
Okay, that's, then that was all, that was approved for a provisional certificate from the Canof Control Commission, which means that it's moving into basically the, the application with the um, with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board for a Site Plan Review. And then um similarly, what, what, this is what um Selectman Derek Bercarian was pointing out, is that the um Mass Wellspring who is leasing the old meeting place um site, which is at the roundabout uh at the, at the intersection of Main and Nathan across from Serendipity, um kind of like right, kind of close to CVS and, and Raspberry Parade and whatnot. So that, that um was also approved by a provisional certificate uh by the Canof Control Commission, which means they will also be moving into the application phase um and the site plan reviewed by the Planning Board.
So on that one, have we ever, have they ever um answered the police chief's concerns, Chief Dubois's previous concerns? And so, and, and by the way, I think it becomes Mike's concerns, because Mike was the one who was on site in the last couple of visits. So I'm just kind of wondering if they've addressed any of those concerns.
So, so, uh, so any approval by the, by the license is contingent upon approval of a security plan by the chief of police. So, so they, so it doesn't matter if they address anything for, for Chief Dubois um uh until, until Chief Noble signs off on any security plan, which I don't know if they provided, so I, yeah.
Thanks. Are you done, Armin?
Uh, just one, well, a couple of more things. First of all, I echo um Chris, your sentiments about um all, all the thanks that needs to go to the, you know, everybody in town for stepping up. And also to Dave's point about having a big celebration when this is all over and making sure that uh we open up downtown. I think it's going to be a fabulous thing combining with everything else that's being planned. I think uh we, we definitely want to get the town out there to celebrate. My only thing that I have to bring up, and I, I had uh spoken to Greg about this through email. I don't know if you guys are aware that the Planning Board has um uh come up with uh some updated or I guess I should say amended the rules and regulations. And is that something, Chris, that we need to look at also, or is that something that they just approve and go ahead with it?
I do not believe that they are within our jurisdiction or purview.
But don't we, don't we, don't we appoint them? Don't we appoint the Planning Board members?
Yes, you do.
So, yes, so you are.
But I don't think that that means that we have any um jurisdiction or control over the decisions that they make or the, the path that they, the path that they go down as far as regulations are there. I don't think we have any control over that.
What rules and regulations are you talking about, Armin?
They, they, they just um, uh, well, I think Megan, you probably know more about that, no?
Yep, so the Planning Board has rules and regulations um that dictate the policies. I'm sorry, this is Megan Zamudo, um Assistant Town Administrator. That dictate how they um proceed and accepting applications is kind of their internal process. So typically the Planning Board will um just approve them at a meeting. I think they might have a public hearing for it, um but that, that's how it's worked in the past. And actually.
It seems to me, it seems to me from what you just described, that, that they're doing what they're supposed to do by setting up policies and procedures so that they can work more efficiently.
Yes.
Okay, so I.
So they're, they're kind of, I think this, these ones right now, it's kind of tweaking some policies. Um as they're going through some projects, they've kind of learned new best practices and, you know, work with Town Council to see what would be appropriate to include.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, that, that's all I got. I just wanted to get some clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, um Justine?
Uh, thank you. I've got just a couple of things. Um first, I echo obviously Chris and everyone else in thanking everybody in the community, the residents, municipal workers, everyone uh for coming together. I think that everybody's holding strong and I appreciate everyone coming together. Second question I have, I was reading through the Mass Municipal Association Bulletin, and one of the things that they referenced was that CPC funding can be used for rental assistance. And I was wondering, I, I talked to someone else who said that that had actually gone on the Affordable Housing Trust. That was actually on uh Affordable Housing Trust um agenda a few months ago. I think to see if you would, see if they would accept it, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I was curious if that's something that the CPC is moving forward with and if they're going to be dedicating more money for that in light of what's going on.
There was, and, and David Gavin, I'm, I'm on the uh, the Affordable Housing Trust. There was some discussion about use of CPC funds uh for certain things. I don't recall a conversation, I see Bill, Bill Crenshaw, who's also on the um, the Affordable Housing Trust, maybe Bill, if you want to pipe in. There was at one point a discussion about using CPC funds for a portion of uh funding some processes that we needed to do. But I, um, I don't remember there being a discussion about using CPC funds to supplement residential, um you know. What do I want to say? Uh, your, your rent, but Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this is Bill Crenshaw. Um, yeah, I'm also a member of the Housing Trust and CPC. And as a matter of fact, one of the um town meeting articles for um allocation of CPC money is money to the Affordable Housing Trust for that purpose.
Okay, perfect. Um, thank you. Uh, the other question I had really quickly, it actually, it's more of a comment, is I know everyone's coming together and um, and supporting our downtown businesses when we can. And uh one of the ways that is, is by buying gift certificates sometimes. And someone else pointed out to me the other day, and I think it actually is a really good point, is that whatever gift certificates we buy, we should also really hold on to for at least another five or six months, because once everything comes up, the local businesses are still going to need an influx of our cash downtown before we actually start using gift cards. Um, so that's just kind of a, a public service announcement, if you will.
That's cool.
That it? Is it? Nothing else? Melissa?
I have a few things. I even have a list, Justine style. So the first thing I wanted to address, and I emailed earlier on this, is I think we need to step up our response in terms of public health and safety. And one of the ways I think we should do that is removing tennis court nets and swings, because no matter what we say, people are still using those. And as the weather gets nicer, I think we're going to see an influx. Like in the legal world, we call those things an attractive nuisance. Where no matter what you say, people are going to use them. I drive by the tennis courts all the time and people are out there playing. So that's my first thing. And if people still don't listen, I think we need to discuss having a curfew or imposing fines on people. Because the only way that things are going to get better is if people start staying home. So I don't know where the rest of the board feels on those things, but I think removing tennis courts and that is a really simple, easy and expensive thing to do.
Last thing I want to do is be compared to Marty Walsh.
Can I ask one question about that though? Um, the one question that, that confused me actually a little bit, and I don't know if there's a process that we can put in place for this, is that the enforcement of that actually comes from the Board of Health. And then, you know, so I, I believe the way it works that I saw was that if the police receive a complaint, they notify the Board of Health and the Board of Health then will either act or will actually ask the police to, to then address the complaint. So I'm wondering, is there a way that the Board of Health can give permission to the police to just, you know, kind of a blanket permission when they get the, these complaints, that they do disperse and then notify the Board of Health? Or sometimes somehow streamline that process?
Well, they could do that. So the, so my, and I, well, Chief Noble, are you still on? Nope. So, so if um, my understanding is that, that's the, that is the responsibility of the Police Department is to enforce the, the rules and regs and, and laws of the town and the Commonwealth. So th- if there, if the Board of Health gives the direction, um similar to I gave the direction to close the athletic fields and, and recreational facilities. So if it came from the Board of Health or, or if there's, if, if any sort of enforcement debt, that is the police, police's responsibility. So they, they could do that. I mean, I'm sure there would be a certain amount of guidance given to the police for standoff distance. You know, they, they're not really there to get confrontational. Um, it's, it's not the most severe or egregious offense. You know, like, so I, I don't know how far they would take. So I, I could, I could get advice from Chief uh about that, of course.
So that brings me to my second point. It seems like it would be a good idea to represent it from the Board of Health at our next meeting. So we could address our concerns and get a direct report from them, rather than make you the liaison and delaying the responses between meetings. I don't know if people are interested. I just think like if there was one time to directly interact with them, it would be during a pandemic.
I agree.
Me too.
Okay.
And the third one is, obviously I'm very tied into the small business community, so I get a lot of emails and they're really suffering and struggling. I don't know how many of them we're going to see on the other end of this. I don't know how much we can do. I mean, Boston has a small grant program for small businesses right now. I don't know if we can talk about deferring business taxes, not forgiving them, but just giving them a chance to play catch-up when this all is over. A lot of them have federal access to money, but the problem, I'm sure you've all read in the news, is that it's a bureaucratic mess. So we don't actually know when those small businesses are going to get the money to be able to dig themselves out of this hole. So I, I think we need to. to be able to dig themselves out of this hole. So I I think we need to have a discussion of how we can support them, maybe in conjunction with the Economic Development Committee. I'm sure Megan's working on this. And again, I know that we're a town, so we're not there to bail out small businesses, but given that we are a town that relies so heavily in our downtown and that's the heart of our community, the last thing we want to do is see the downtown fail in this, you know, unprecedented time.
You said I'm helpful.
Are you? So this is still Greg Johnson. Are you referring specifically to what taxes, the meals tax?
I I mean, just all taxes. I mean, if a small business owner owns their property, they might have, you know, commercial property tax, there's the meals tax, you know, there's license fees that are up for renewal, just any way we can push off some of those, not forgive them, because obviously we need the revenue too, but give them a grace period to catch up because so many of those businesses are just completely closed. They're nonessential. And a lot of the restaurants have chosen to close because they can't afford to keep up with it, given the reduction in customers. And I don't know what the answer is. I just I think it's something that we need to have a larger discussion on on how to support them because I don't think, you know, we can afford to lose our downtown and any of the other adjacent small businesses. Nor do I think they deserve that. So I think it we owe at least a conversation to discuss this further.
Yeah, I'm I'm in agreement with Melissa. I think we need to have that conversation. I I I talked to some of the business owners and they're they're they saying, is there anything that we could do from our end? I understand there's things happening from from the state and federal and all that, but what can we do from our end? Even if it's a small gratitude, they're saying, look, we we're here for you and we 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 feel your pain. So something, I don't know what that is, but to Melissa's point, we've got to have a discussion about what can we do from our end to show some some of that gratitude to them and and say that, look, we're sympathizing, we'll appeal for you.
Can we go back? I just wanted to go back to Melissa's earlier point about the tennis courts and those type of things. Greg, can you get a opinion from town council as to our authority to close those things and do those things?
I I, yes, I can. But I mean, if you if you
And then the and then then the follow up that we could have with, you know, a patrolman going by and and seeing whatever they see and, you know, giving someone a friendly reminder to you know, you're not supposed to be there. Keep moving type of thing, or you know, you're not supposed to be here, not supposed to be there. Just what our authority is, if we have any at all.
I I understand. So curfews or 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 access to public land?
Yeah, yeah, access to public recreational facilities until they're, you know, cleared for use again.
And curfews are extreme. I don't think we should do that, just as a point. I was just raising examples on ways we could cut down on, you know, our liability and people exposing themselves further to
What they did to the soccer fields on 27 and South River, they put Jersey barricades because the kids are still playing soccer there.
The one, is that the one right around the corner? Right over the line?
No, that's
Yeah, right over the line on 27.
Is the place was packed on Sunday.
No kidding. Now they just put the barricades at the parking, not the entrance.
Sunday, it was Sunday morning.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was kids, there was coaches out there coaching.
Yes, coaches with them, you're right. So can we go back quickly to Melissa's to Melissa's point about the downtown businesses? Is that something that we could put on the agenda for the 14th or that's too much going on for the 14th?
What do you want to, what do you want the agenda item to be?
To have a discussion, any anything that we could do from our end, maybe the maybe Greg and Megan could look at and with 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 Mike Guzzo, I'll look at some options that we could, you know, delay anything with yields taxes or whatever that is that we could do. Because I know some other towns are doing, Worcester's doing something, and Worcester obviously has been a city, but they're doing things like that. They're, so we should look at what's what other towns are doing, maybe.
I'm wondering if could we possibly put it off for for the following week?
The other ones? Oh, sure. Oh, yeah.
Or whatever, just because, especially if we're asking a lot of of Mike and and Greg right now to come up
Yeah, you're right.
That type of money and everything, and that type of information.
I just want to have that discussion to Melissa's point.
Putting off the 21st, I think that would give time for the Economic Development Committee to weigh in or the small alliance asking as to what would them and give us some concrete ideas.
So Melissa, do you want to do you want to reach out to to SBA and 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 EDC or?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
You know, one of one of the obvious issues that'll be raised is the split tax rate. But if you affect the split tax rate, then all you're doing is flipping that responsibility over to those who have been talking about the entire meeting that are going to be struggling as it is, our residents as well. So I don't know if we have the capability to do like a city like Worcester or Boston or whatever. We just, you know, I I I I would love to have the discussion and hear what ideas there are, but I don't know what, we don't have enough to make an impact. Other than other than the split tax rate, that's that's an impact. But then would we want to thrust that upon the residents? Is that the time to do it? So that that is something I think we could certainly have a discussion on. But it wouldn't be implemented until until the next tax tax year, but it would be a heavy impact on the rest of the residents.
Yeah, but I I think too, if Melissa could reach out to MBA and and EDC, I think get some input from them. It doesn't mean we have to do what they're asking, but it would be nice to understand what is it that they're looking for.
Anybody else?
All right, Dick Downey, I will ask Jack to put that on the agenda. The EDC is having a meeting Thursday morning and so we'll
Okay.
Great, thanks, Dick.
All right, so our next meeting is 14th, next next Tuesday. And then make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. David?
I'll second it. And then I
I, Armin?
I.
Justine?
I.
Melissa?
I.
I will thank everybody for listening in and attending in the comments and we look forward to doing this again next next Tuesday. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Be safe.
Good night. Stay safe.
Healthy.
Good night.